Arel, Budkey, Coon, Lunskey.
Here.
Maticek.
Here.
Raykert.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Wasbik. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Reading and approval of the minutes.
Move approval.
Moved by Maticek, sir second, Budkey seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item 3-1.
Item 3-1, public hearing fast track, location subdivision located on 3002 Gateway Drive.
Good evening. So for this item, we're up on the north end Storage Max facility. They're looking to expand the rear yard of this property. Borders along 13th Avenue North, Gateway Drive, North 42nd Street. In order to facilitate the storage units in the back lot, they need to combine the lots for building co-purposes, so that's the purpose of the replat. Any further questions? I could answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Edwardson? That'll open the public hearing. Anyone has a comment on 3-1, please step forward. Seeing none, back to the commission.
Move approval.
Move approval by Sandy, second by Lunskey. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item 3-2.
Item 3-1, public hearing fast track, conditional use permits for animal boarding on the gateway drive.
Ms. Edwardson.
So for this one, we're looking at storage and temporary shelter of animals. There would be no daycare on site. Red Dot Place, if you're familiar, off a mill road on the north end of town as well, close to the north pedestrian bridge here. They're looking to do the storage and the temporary shelter, which does require the conditional use permit, given that there's going to be animals boarded overnight. Their business plan would be a maximum around the 20 mark, even though code allows them a maximum of 66. They're well within all of the other conditional uses required, so with that, staff's recommending approval.
Any questions? Open it up for a public hearing. Anyone has a comment on 3-2, please step forward. Seeing none, back to the commission. Mr. Maticek.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I don't have any financial interest in this group, but my wife and I are volunteers with this group. It's a very good organization. I think it would be in the best interest if I just recused from voting on this, if that's possible. And I know there's a representative out here tonight and myself. If you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
Okay.
But I need a motion to recuse.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Lunskey, second by Budkey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. You were accused, Frank. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, question.
Mr. Budkey.
So I know the code, I think there's this wording on the maximum size of the outdoor fenced area shall not exceed the size of the indoor area. And I see that that's compliant. I guess, just my two cents, this is like an enormous site, and if the application were for a larger outdoor area, I would have no issue with that.
I think the area chosen is agreed upon with the property owner as well as organization, so, but noted. But just to give a context as to why and where, that's where it's been negotiated to.
Okay. Maybe this goes hand in hand then. The other thing I spotted in here was the distance, like the proximity to like an adjacent commercial structure. And it looked like this had been hammered through two. It looks like it's about 18 to 20 feet away as proposed, but the, again, the code says 300 feet. Am I reading that correctly? The outdoor fenced area shall be located no closer than 300 feet from any, oh, I'm sorry, that's residential structure, no closer than 100 feet from any commercial structure.
And I believe both of these are industrial, so I think that's the flexibility there.
Okay.
But, yes. And I guess, to your comment, is it a question of 100 feet? Is it questioning the code or questioning the layout of this request?
I guess it was questioning the code.
Okay.
But.
Yep. Ryan, I think at some point, we'd like to go back and revisit the dog kenneling boarding. There's things that probably could be opened up and changed and a little bit more, we just haven't been able to get to it. So we know the way the current code is set up, it's a little bit, I think there's things we both like to change, but that is what it is today. And they do mean it today. And hopefully, we can revisit that and follow up on that conversation in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, did you have a comment? You can come on up and state your name.
I'm Leslie Rechmeyer with Journey Home Animal Rescue. And the business that is within that proximity that you're discussing, they did agree to it as well and signed off on it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Mr. Budkey?
Move to approve.
Okay. Move to approve. Lunskey seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries.
Item 3.
Item 3-3.
Item 3-3, public hearing fast track, replat of Lot 5, Block 1, Myers Fifth Edition, located at 2200 South 42nd Street.
Yes, the following two items go together, this final action on the plat as well as the preliminary on the rezoning for 4-1. It's the same area. It'd be the third and final phase of this Myers Fifth Empire Townhomes development. They've had a successful development here in the first phase. The second phase is currently underway, and they're looking to get the third phase done and underway this year as well. So with that, the plat shows the replats of that, and then the PUD also puts in line the zoning for that as well.
Any questions for Ms. Edwardson? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone has a comment on 3-3, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Back to the commission.
Move approval.
Mr. Lunskey moves approval. Mr. Maticek seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item 4-1.
Item 4-1, ordinance to amend zoning after Myers 2 comes in, another two to the Myers fifth edition, located at 2200 South 42nd Street.
Ms. Edwardson.
Like previously, it's the zoning for the previous plat. We are zoning it to multifamily. It is preliminary. We'll do notifications and final next month.
Any questions for Ms. Edwardson? Ms. Sandy moves approval. Mr. Lunskey seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item 4-2.
Item 4-2, ordinance to amend Chapter 8 of the Land Development Code, amending Section 18-03013 relating to office, off-premises signs specifically along South Washington
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So I just wanted to go through, we've gone through, I guess, the last couple of months now, making some changes to the off-premise advertising requirements. I think it started with the decennial census, we needed to increase the cap. That's all prescriptive in code. Next, we had the discussion about the radial distance around the 500 feet, whether it's same side of the street or radial around. The last item, and the sign subcommittee met, I want to say it was very end of May. I think we had the minutes in here. The next two items were, came through that. The one that's on billboards specifically, there's lots of discussion about the number of billboards, so we have a cap of 111. There didn't seem to be any appetite to change that. But one of the things that, we have two billboard companies now that are coming forward and interested in these additional signs. There was some requests for some flexibility in terms of areas of town that they could be done. So one piece of code that we have caps the number of billboards that are allowed on South Washington Street. And that's capped at nine. Currently, we have eight. We have a request right now for a ninth billboard along that stretch. That'll be before you, probably next month. I'll be talking with that applicant in the next week to make sure that they're good with moving forward with that one. Those, to go get that, it is a requirement that it comes through the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if you remember, I want to say about a year ago, we approved the one on, I'll say the Mexican Village Strip Mall, 13th and Washington. It's a process where we do some notification. Planning Commission looks at it, takes a look at the sign, visual clutter, there's some other things in code. So those things are still in there, but the request now and what the sign subcommittee looked at was removing the cap of nine. So we're still going to be the cap of 111 in terms of signs, but the potential of removing the cap of nine signs that we would have available along that stretch. The additional piece that we looked at was, as long as the sign is in a commercial zone, so whether it be conventional or in a PUD, because most of them along the south are in PUD, is allowing it along that stretch after getting permission from Planning Commission. So all those things are, those hoops are still in there, the protections, but there wouldn't be a hard cap of nine along South Washington. So the code that you had before you on 4-2 looks to make those changes, and it's just looking at that cap of nine and removing that cap. I'll stand for any questions, and I know one of the companies is here potentially to answer any questions as well.
Mr. Brooks, any idea why the nine was put in there? Just a little history on it?
You know, it's hard to say it was, I think it was put, yeah, it was put in place in early 2000, about the same time the cap went in for the whole city. And so I think it was an overall, hey, we want to, we want to limit the amount of signs that are out there. So we're still doing that, just allowing them a little bit more along that corridor. So, good question. I don't know if I can completely answer it, but it was put in about that same time.
Any questions? All right. So there is no public hearing. There will be a public hearing at the next meeting?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And is there a public hearing at City Council, I would imagine?
Yeah, on any ordinance change, there would be.
Okay. Anything else from the commission? Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Jamie?
Yeah.
Mr. Lunskey moves to approve. Ms. Sandy seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item 4-3, Mr. Brooks.
Item 4-3, ordinance to amend Chapter 8 Land Development Code, amending Section 18-0301 relating to high school ground monument signs.
Thank you. So I'll start on this one. Again, went through the sign subcommittee. We have two high schools in town, and they were looking at potential revenue generated ground monument signs that would have potential sponsorships on them. This is being done in other high schools in North Dakota, and so this is something that's being looked at. It helps advertise for the school. It also provides some opportunity for folks to provide some monetary assistance to individual schools and kind of show their support that way. So we've looked at it, looked at Fargo, West Fargo. They are doing this. We looked hard at those codes, and we've actually had a, here, let me post up what we've received. So we've got two high schools in Grand Forks. There's Grand Fork Central, that's downtown. Here's a proposal for what that sign could look like. This one's the central one. We have spoken to the DDRB as well, since that's downtown, and that would fall under this area as well. Let them know what the sign subcommittee was looking at, let them weigh in. They understood what we were looking at. We didn't say for sure it would be ground monument on land. I think there's also option in the downtown that it could be a potential wall, but it would go through them and for their sign-off as well. There's sponsorships. These are the tenant panels of what those sponsors would look like. So say Business A would be this top sponsor, could be Joe's Crab Shack, whatever. I don't want to say any particular names, but you could end up with these sponsors that are helping assist. It's revenue potential for the schools. They did share with us what they were intending to do, but, you know, it really becomes monetary for the administration to assist with some things, bringing in speakers, those types of things. But it also helps the schools, I think it does provide an identity as well for the school, another piece of pride that goes out there. I'll show you as well what the Red River, now, we just received these in, and these are what they're looking at. Here's the Red River one. Today, Red River has one. It's very old. It's out on 17th Avenue. It's a bit scary. It doesn't look great, and it's hidden by the trees, which is probably a benefit at this point, but this is certainly going to make it look a lot better. It's certainly something that we haven't taken lightly, but I think in the end, and those are folks on the sign sub, I think, I think we took two meetings talking about this, and this is kind of where it fell. We're limiting electronic signs. We're limiting what the sponsorship pieces would be. That's all intended on purpose. We didn't want to have all electronic sign. And then it's still going to advertise events too that would go on at the school, which is all good and gets information out there for everybody. Not everybody brings their information home to the parents to let them know when an event's going on as well. So it provides opportunity as well for the schools, and likely, you know, maybe even students get to participate in some of those things. There's still code pieces in there in terms of limiting, in terms of this is going to have to follow the same, you know, flashing isn't allowed, we have to be careful with the transitions, one second hold time, same thing that the commercial businesses do today. And all their software, when they get these signs, those can be put into there, so they're all limited like that. So with that, I'll answer any questions. I know High School's here and Nick as well with Indigo, so.
Any questions for Mr. Brooks? Mr. Brooks, is there proposed placements of these on the properties or?
Well, the Red River one, we discussed, and I don't think it was finalized, but it was going to be on 17th, and I think they were looking at likely that entrance that comes by the, between there and Apollo, looking at that being likely. I don't know if we finalized that. Yeah. Central, no, we haven't finalized that one. There's still probably a little bit more discussion on where would be best on that, so.
Mr. Budkey? Yeah, so I've got a few questions on, I guess, the language and how this sits in the code, like the broader sign code, if that makes sense?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so I guess the first thing would be, in the case of Central High, we're talking about the B4 zone downtown, right? There's the DDRB. When I looked through that code, it looked, I mean, there's already ground monument signs allowed, and there's already a review process, which is to go before the DDRB, correct?
Correct. I believe so. Oh, signs are administrative now, correct. That used to be the, that used to be the process, but in this case, maybe I'll let Andrea answer that. She knows that code a bit better.
So with the most recent design standard changes, we changed the approval process for signs to be administratively reviewed with appeals to go through the board.
Okay.
So that would be an administrative review of, if somebody wanted to do a ground monument, it would be staff checking the code to see that ground monument, that code.
Right, right. Okay, and then in this case, I think you'd probably determine, all right, in the B4 zone downtown, nobody else is allowed to do digital signs, right? Digital sign boards, correct?
This is high school ground monument only?
Correct. It's, but yes, digital signage is specifically prohibited in the code.
Right.
And I think the other big issue here is, and what we talked a lot about is, it's off-premises advertising. That's where this, these signs are so much different than any other sign, is we're allowing them to put businesses that are not their business on the signs. So that's a fairly large change. That's kind of the bigger part here.
Okay. Okay, so just to kind of continue, I wrote down a few things when I first went through this, and not so much as it relates to Red River, but more so to Central and the B4 zone and the DDRB, like I just said. It seems to create a contradiction, right? In that, in the section of code that governs the B4 signage, it says no, it specifically prohibits digital signage, right? It seems kind of redundant, right? Because it, like I said, there is a provision in there that says ground monument signage is allowed. So I'm a little confused as to like, why we're creating another section for that? Does that make sense?
I guess our intent there, I see what you're saying, that in the B4, it's, ground monuments are allowed, but digital's prohibited. In this case, we're writing it in to try to mirror the Red River. It may be redundant, but we are trying to specify that the exclusivity of the high school nature of it, to limit this type with the digital and the sponsorship sign specifically to the high school that we do have downtown.
The sponsorship would be key in this case. Nobody else would be allowed to do off-premise advertising anywhere else. So that's what makes these ground monuments different than any other ground monument inside, whether, or in town, whether it be, you know, out on 32nd or anywhere. You can only advertise what goes on, on that premises.
Right, right, okay.
And I guess to add to that, to your point, if somebody else wanted to do a ground monument downtown, they would be limited to just a static ground monument sign.
Right.
Because digital is prohibited, so.
Okay, so maybe, can I ask it this way? I don't want to approve anything that takes this out of the DDRB's purview. Does that, does that make sense? Like, I feel like if this gets approved, it's sort of a green light that you'd have identical signs at both locations. And I'm not, I don't want to get rid of that safeguard, is what I'm imagining the DDRB.
So we did go to the DDRB to get their feedback as well prior to this. We went to sign subcommittee first, and then we went to DDRB to get their input and thoughts. They were, they understood the nature of the high school being downtown and all those different things, and it's, the high school is a unique enough use that they thought the digital signage and the static signage was appropriate. The trick with that is getting to be the location of the sign downtown, and where it fits on the campus and that sort of thing.
And the scale, I'll say. I mean, this sketch here is, it's a very large sign. There's a couple of other ground monument signs on adjacent buildings, like right across the street at the Federal Building, right? Has a very handsome ground monument sign, but at a completely different scale than this.
The board did not discuss size, I will say that. I think it was a little undetermined what the design of that would be just yet when we met with them. At that point, we were wondering if it'd be wall signage or ground monument signage.
Yeah, if you want us to bring this back before DDRB, I don't think that would, that's probably something that we're looking to do anyway. Once this is up, it's up, that would kind of end it, you know, in terms of high school ground monuments, or they would be allowed one, and then get their feedback on, because this wasn't drafted yet in terms of put together. We can certainly bring that to DDRB. I think that's, we probably would have done that anyway. But we'll certainly let you know that for sure we will do that.
Okay. Maybe last thing for me, at least as far as like language goes. In, there's a couple of different references to specifically grand monument, but then there's like one sentence in here that says, "or wall-mounted" sign. And I think if this goes further, that we shouldn't have that ambiguity. This is paragraph LL, sentence 2. So every other reference before, since refers specifically to a ground monument sign, and then that sentence says each school is permitted one sign. The sign may be either a ground monument or a wall-mounted sign.
Yeah, we can certainly take that out now. At that time, I, you know, as I said, they didn't have this drafted, and we weren't sure of Central, they were, even the DDRB had talked about the potential that it could be a wall-mounted sign depending on. So I think we can remove it if this is, if they're going ahead with a ground monument, we can remove the wall-mounted references in there. We can have those removed.
All right, that's it for now.
Anyone else? Ms. Sandy?
I do kind of like that it does have the option of the wall-mounted, just because I know that Central, if I recall correctly, didn't know exactly where they would want to put that and wanted to work with the downtown development folks to be sure that it was most appropriate. And I know the conversation was it wouldn't be mounted on the historic building, but perhaps the new addition, so that it was, it may be less noisy that way if it's not a big ground monument. So I'd like to leave that language in there. I want to point out too that I believe we talked about also allowing this at community if they chose to do that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure that we ever.
Because they would follow as a high school, but not allowing it at any of the middle schools or the elementary schools.
One of the issues there is that they don't own their property. It's actually, there's one ground monument that's already on the site for School for the Blind. They're all on one site there. So we could certainly, so far, I think if they were ever at a site where they could do another sign, we could certainly input that zoning if that came into play.
Would it make more sense just to have this as a blanket high school?
Public high school.
Because if they can't do it based on not owning the property, then they can't do it no matter what we say. But at least then we don't have to come back and.
Leave the generic term of public.
Well, I would like, I would like that. I don't know how others feel about that.
I understand.
Looking to Mr. Budkey's point, you know, I don't remember seeing this sign being this big on the, on the sign subcommittee, and I see your point to some degree of the size. Would they ever consider doing two signs that are smaller? I mean, it's such a big property. It might be an advantage to them to have two signs, but make them each smaller so that they're, because I think, you know, this sign is pretty large for.
Well, the, and maybe this, she's pretty small here, but this is, it's eight foot high. It's eight foot high. She might be a five-foot gal sitting there, but it's an eight-foot-high sign and 10-foot wide. That's just my quick, so I think there may be a, Nick, can you help out? Is that?
Nick was scoffing at me when I was doing that, so why don't you tell me why I'm wrong?
I mean, if you think that.
State your name, please.
Nick Cox, Indigo Signs. This sign is actually, fits the standard ground monument code, so it is eight foot tall, 10 foot wide. Certainly appropriate for the Red River location, based on the setbacks and the traffic along 17th. I think we're all kind of struggling with this placement where this would go for Central. There's been some ideas thrown around, Megan, I think you're right, I think maybe a wall-mounted sign is maybe a better path for this location. When we went to DDRB, they kind of left it open-ended for us. They approved the idea of an electronic sign just for Central in the downtown district. I think what we're here asking you for is approval to do the off-premise sponsorship only, only for the high schools. Any final design that gets put together for Central would definitely go back in front of DDRB before anything is implemented. That make sense?
Yeah, does it make sense to make two signs or no?
It complicates.
I mean, because there's so many, there's so many, there's so many faces and so much area to Central.
Mr. Wasbik isn't here to tell us. It complicates it in a few different ways, that we would need electrical feeds in two different spots. And then the way these digital signs work, there's one that has the brains and one that does what it's told. Essentially, we're buying two of them that have the brains in it, so it would up the cost to do two standalone signs rather than one back-to-back.
Okay. Is there anything else that you want to see in there if we do approve this? If you haven't, to make your, keep your options open for Central? Because it sounds like you've decided on Red River, but you still are trying to decide on Central.
And I think there's some varying opinions on Central, but I think if it's one ground monument or wall-mounted sign, then I think that gives us enough flexibility to come up with the best solution for Central to make us the most, the most people happy as we can.
And would you, would we have that by final?
Well, I think that's, the school district kind of has to kind of have that discussion, then we'd have to bounce back to DDRB, maybe?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we'll do our best.
Mr. Lunskey?
Are we going to, are we going to have this sign split up on two facades to corner of a building? I mean, is that something we need to have the wall sign plural, or?
I don't think, I think it would be a single face.
Okay.
One standalone sign if it was on the building. I know that DDRB would be very much against it going on the historical part of the building, so it would definitely be on a newer portion, and I think that would limit it to just one face.
Okay.
Mr. Maticek, did you have a?
Yeah, just, just a quick question. We're sponsor one, two, three, and four. It's just strictly the name of the business. It's not a reader board in there saying sale on Tuesday or anything like that. It's just, just says Frank's Pizza, Frank's Pizza or whatever. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions from the commission?
I'll move approval.
Move approval by Sandy. Is there a second?
We need to change that, right? With the generic high school and not.
Did you want to change, Megan?
Yeah. But I'd like to leave the wall versus the option of the wall sign.
But just one sign?
Right, one, one sign, yeah.
But it could be a wall?
But it could be a wall.
I, yeah, I would change number one then to take out Red River and Central. I would take out that dual reference is what I would do.
And just say high school, yeah.
So on the publicly owned land of a Grand Forks public high school?
Yeah. Or just Grand Forks School. I don't know if you want to limit it.
Well, we want to limit.
High school that a.
Well, then.
Let's say Grand Fork.
A high school.
Grand Forks Public High School.
Okay. Is that okay with the second? Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Budke?
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify on this point. It sounded like everybody was in agreement that this question of the sign at Central matters to the DDRB, I guess, wants it to go there for further review and comment, but I just want to understand if this ordinance change makes it an administrative action, right? Where it's, we're talking about it, I don't want to cut DDRB out of the process of this, if that makes sense.
And maybe I could, I'm on the DDRB.
Yeah.
And we had a, we had a pretty full review of this. We had a pretty full discussion.
But not with this particular sketch?
I think they, my, we certainly had this sketch for the Red River sign.
Okay.
And I don't think anybody was contemplating really anything different than this. I think that the DDRB has weighed in. I mean, Ms. Edwards, and you were there as well, maybe. I think this is what they were envisioning.
I think we'll still bring it back to them, just to show them. Yep.
Okay. And we, do we need that as part of the motion? I don't think so.
I'm happy to put that in the, do you think that's appropriate?
We will do it, but if you want to include it, just to show DDRB that you guys are still aligned with them, that's good.
Andrew, so like the sign approval would go through the board?
For, for just, for just high schools?
Yeah.
You think so?
Just for Central, yeah.
Yeah, for final approval, let's do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have what you need for the motion?
Okay, so the sign, you're taking the motion and to approve that the sign appeal will go through the DDRB board.
And to amend to generic high school language for the.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal how you'd be saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Excuse me, did, Lunskey, did you second the motion?
He did.
Okay.
Your reports.
Nothing new, other than this is John's last meeting with us. He's going to be replaced next Monday. He's stepping down from the commission and we're sorry to see him go. He's been fantastic job over the last year and it's been great to get to know you. But we will have a new commissioner come next Monday, so. And Megan's reappointment is on next Monday as well, so I don't think we have any other replacements till next year, I think is the, is the next one, so. With that, that's all we had.
We've got a new hire.
Oh, and we, we have a new hire, Sierra Johnson. She was at another public meeting tonight, but we do have a, one new hire and hoping to have a second one to announce to you next month. So we looked at another option, plan or tech, and so we're very excited. We think we'll have another one to share with you next month.
Great, and thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Thank everyone that's made this enjoyable and I very much do enjoy it. Just schedules conflict and something's got to give, so.
Yeah, I understand.
All right, so motion moved. Move by Lunskey.[1767.03]